Good evening. What a lovely crowd here, before I say anything else. I call the April 4th City Council meeting to order. And we have two special guests here tonight to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would Elizabeth Weaver and Tucker Beach please come forward? And would everybody please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the clock of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for leading the pledge. I almost have to stand up to see Elizabeth. There she is. So Elizabeth, I'll start with you. Could you tell me what school you go to?
Sanger Elementary School.
Very good. And can you tell me what grade you're in?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, and who's your teacher?
Ms. Bullock.
Ms. Bullock? I hear she's a really good teacher. Yeah. What do you like to do at kindergarten? What's your favorite thing?
I like when I learn about math.
When she learns about math in kindergarten, that has to make her dad and her mom proud, and her grandparents. We'll get to that in a minute. What do you do after you get home from school? Do you take any lessons?
On Thursdays, I take Irish dancing after school.
Irish dancing? Wow, that's really cool. And do you have anyone up here that you want to introduce to us? Who's up here that's special to you?
Grandpa.
Grandpa. And who is your grandpa? You know his name, yeah. And, you know, Elizabeth, every time we have other people up here, your grandpa always asks them, "Do you know what..." And then he fills in the blank. But do you know what your grandpa does? You do.
No, I forgot.
That's okay. I think she told me earlier, he's the best city councillor in Stillwater. She did. She did. See? She did. Okay, we have another guest as well, and her name is Tucker Beach. Hi, Tucker.
Hi.
Which school do you go to?
Sanger Ridge Elementary.
So you're both the same one, but I think you are in a different grade. What grade are you in?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade, and who's your teacher?
Ms. Pogue.
And what's your favorite subject?
Reading.
What do you do after school?
Um, it depends. I swim sometimes, because I swim first on Mondays, Thursdays, and Wednesdays. But sometimes I will get on my computer and do coding.
Coding, wow. Okay. Very good.
That's great.
Yeah, it's better than I can say I did in fifth grade. Who brought you here tonight?
My parents.
Could you introduce them?
This is Dean Cheryl Tucker and my dad, Dave.
Do you know what your parents do?
My mom is the dean of graduate college, and my dad is the stay-at-home dad.
Very good. Okay. So back to Elizabeth, I forgot to ask you, Elizabeth. Who brought you here tonight?
My daddy.
And can you point to your daddy and maybe introduce him? Tell us his name?
John.
John, okay. Hi, John. Is your last name Weaver?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that's the connection with councillor Weaver, right?
Yes.
We really appreciate both of you coming here tonight and helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to come down there right now. And we're going to take a picture, okay? And because your little brother was supposed to be here, you're going to give that to your little brother too, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Both stand. Oh, there you are, there's too many people. The next thing on our agenda are a few proclamations. The first one is the Child Abuse Prevention Month. I think Ms. Campbell? Whereas, child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society, affecting many children in our community. And whereas, every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect. And whereas, it is the responsibility of every adult who comes in contact with a child to protect that child's inalienable right to a safe and nurturing childhood. And whereas, Stillwater has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas, our communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child maltreatment prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now, therefore, I, Gina Noble, do hereby acclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Stillwater.
I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the Child Abuse Prevention Task Force and the Civil Center, with the collaborative efforts of everyone, this problem will hopefully be reduced. Thank you.
And the next is the national, it's Glenn Redd?
Reading.
Reading.
Stillwater Housing Authority.
Yes. Whereas, April 16th, 2016 marks the 48th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas, the City of Stillwater is committed to support the Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to help assure every citizen of their right to fair housing. Now, therefore, I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby declare April 2016 as Fair Housing Month in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and I urge all citizens to support fair housing throughout the year. Would you like to say something?
I just want to...
Oh, okay.
I do want to thank the council for their support throughout the entire time that I've been here for the last 31 years, and for your support for public housing and for fair housing in this community. It's a very important thing that we do, and I appreciate your support very much. Thank you.
And we have one more. This is to someone very special in the audience, and... Want to just stay there? Okay, sure. You want to explain first?
Madam Mayor, councillors, thanks for taking time out of your agenda to let us be here tonight. Tonight, we're going to do something that's really special to those of us here in law enforcement. The handsome young man in uniform on my right is Riley Hoffman. He is 10 years old, and it came to our attention that he has a keen interest in police and firemen. And due to some physical challenges in his life, he didn't think he would ever have the opportunity to be a policeman. Well, we didn't find that acceptable, so tonight, we are going to have Riley join our ranks and become an honorary police officer here in Stillwater. And I got to tell you, Riley, we're both flattered and honored that you want to join our ranks, and I also want to thank you, because it's moments like this that kind of give us all pause and take us back to our beginning and remind us of why we chose to serve. I'm just flattered that a young man like yourself wants to do that as well.
Hi, Riley. I'm going to read a proclamation, and then I will turn it over. Whereas, Riley Hoffman is a 10-year-old boy who dreams of one day serving the public as a police officer or a firefighter. And whereas, the Stillwater Police Department held a ceremony to swear in Riley as an honorary Stillwater Police Officer. And whereas, the Stillwater City Council would like to acknowledge Riley and his family. Now, therefore, I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby declare April 4th, 2016, as Riley Hoffman Day in Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Okay, Riley. Listen carefully, because this is the oath of office that a police officer takes. And I want you to think about all of the phrases in here, and I'll say it for you. I, Riley Hoffman, do you swear that as an honorary law enforcement officer, you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma? That you will discharge the duties of your office to serve mankind, safeguard lives and property, and protect the constitutional rights of all people? That you will be exemplary in obeying and enforcing the laws and regulations of the Stillwater Police Department? That you will never allow personal feelings, prejudices, animosities, or friendships to influence your decisions? That you will not knowingly receive, directly or indirectly, any money or other valuable thing for the performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to your office? And do you further swear that whatever you observe or hear of a confidential nature in your official capacity will be kept ever secret unless revelation is necessary in the performance of your duties? Do you promise all these things?
Congratulations, Officer Hoffman, you chose good heroes.
Thank you, Judge Ron. Okay, as we're sitting here for a minute as the room empties, but I think we can carry on now. We will go to the consent docket, councillors. Does anyone wish to remove an item, or is there a motion to approve? And we weren't invited, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Consent docket.
Second.
Of a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. And the consent docket was approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to public hearings. Item number seven, receive public comment regarding the proposed City of Stillwater operating budget for fiscal year 2016-17. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol?
This would be the second in public hearings that we have had on the budget, and this would be the time when the public is welcome to come and make any suggestions that they have for fiscal year 16-17.
And I don't think we had anyone register... So I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going, because no one is here to speak, I will close the public hearing. And what do we do next, Mr. Dorman?
You don't have to do anything.
All right, okay.
This is the second of two public hearings that we're required to have on the budget, and the next that you will see of the budget is an approval resolution in May.
Thank you, Mr. McNichol. Right, that moves us to general orders. Consider a proposed amendment to Form-Based Codes. Mr. McNichol?
John McClinney will be providing that report tonight in place of Paula Dennison of Development Services.
Hello, Mr. McClinney?
I will do my best to fill in. Okay, we are proposing some amendments to Form-Based Codes. The council does not have to make a decision on these tonight, they'll come back to council on the 18th. We're recommending that you refer these to the Planning Commission tomorrow night, so there'll be time for further consideration, questions, and changes by council. When we reconstructed Maple Street from Main to Duck, it revealed a few real-world issues that we didn't realize were going to be an issue in Form-Based Codes. So we had some concerns about fire code, access for emergency vehicles, waste management vehicles, and then the OSU bus system. And the next few pictures just show you a few of the issues we encountered. Because of the curb radiuses that were installed, we're having a lot of issues with large vehicles driving over the curb because they can't make that turn. We had fire trucks out there. One day, when school was out, there were no students, and you can see that the only way that they can get by each other is one of them was pulled into a parking space. If there were cars parked there, it would be difficult to get those vehicles through there. And then we actually did kind of a little test ourselves to see if our trash trucks could make the corners, and the only time that that truck was barely able to make the corner was when it swung wide past the center line of Main Street to turn that corner. So what we're proposing is that we revise the thoroughfares so that they comply with standard, city standards, that are already adopted in terms of the curb radiuses and the street widths. And then we also, as we were looking at it, we got into some other things that we saw in Form-Based Codes as we're reading through it, and we wanted to make sure that there were no conflicts between bike lanes and parking and travel lanes. And here's an example of one of the conflicts we'd like to avoid in terms of our shared use roadways with parallel parking. And then, parallel parking is also difficult to use. So as we looked at it, we decided we would propose something different. And what we're proposing is that we do angled parking in the center of the street, so that it's got improved access, it's easier to get into and out of. Where space is available for two rows, we can get twice as much parking on the same street as we could with parallel parking. If space is not available for two rows, we get the same amount. And then the next few pictures show some examples. This happens to be a town I'm a little bit familiar with, because I was born there. This is Goldsboro, North Carolina. This is their downtown. This is Mount Olive, North Carolina. If you've ever had Mount Olive pickles, that's where they came from. And they have a railroad track running up the middle of their street with the parking on either side. And they also have parallel parking on the sides of the street, they have enough width there for that. This is Scotland Neck, North Carolina. Same situation. This is Fort Collins, Colorado. They have enough room to have parking in the middle and on both sides. This is Kingsport, Tennessee, in their downtown area. And they have no parking on either side of the road, it's all in the center. This is Washington, Iowa. They also have room for it in the middle and on both sides. And this is Long Beach, New York, and this one's interesting in that it's basically the exact same situation that one of our thoroughfares we would be proposing, is that you've got the bike lane, you've got the sidewalk next to the buildings, you've got the tree wells, you've got the bike lane, you have the car lane. And I move to the next one. Car lane, and then the parking in the center. And this is just to show you that Long Beach, New York, has really embraced this concept, because as I was looking at their aerial photos on Google, they have it all over everywhere. And then this might be something you're familiar with, where they did center street parking, that is downtown Stillwater, Oklahoma. Back in the day. So it's not something that's... Not something that's all that unusual. The other things that we're looking to revise is that we're revising the height requirements in parking garages so that they comply with the height requirements in the 2009 International Building Codes. We're currently at eight feet, they allow seven foot two inches. And changing the parking requirements for mixed uses so that we ensure adequate residential space. We have a system in there where you're allowed to reduce the amount of parking you have based on providing retail. What we want to do is make sure that that level does not go below what is the minimum necessary for residential parking, since this is going to be a residential area with high rises. And then we also have a method proposed in there for adjacent property owners who desire to be included in the Form-Based Codes area to become included in that, because we've had inquiries about adding their properties to that area, and we have nothing in there right now to allow that. So I will attempt to answer any questions. These all go to Planning Commission tomorrow night, comes back to council on the 18th, so there's time for input from the public and from the council and Planning Commission. And we're just recommending that you refer these changes to Planning Commission.
Okay, councillors?
Where was the email we got from Keith? Is that this, the 10-foot? I didn't see that on here. Is that being changed?
That has not been changed, no. Where possible, on those diagrams that you received, the travel lanes are at least 11 and a half feet. And bike lanes, adjacent to, are six feet wide, sidewalks are also six feet wide. So there's been great effort to accommodate everyone. And the particular one that he was talking about was Duck Street, and he didn't think that that should be more than 10 feet. One of the issues is in a 10-foot road with 102 inches of allowable width of a vehicle under the laws of the State of Oklahoma, you end up with a nine-inch cushion on each side of the vehicle, and I don't know about you, that wouldn't be particularly comfortable for me. That's not much.
Do OSU buses drive on Duck Street as well?
On the proposal, though, that's in front of us, I was a little concerned about that angled parking in the middle of the road, but after seeing the pictures, it sort of makes the storefronts look a lot cleaner. I know that's not necessarily your intent, but that jumped out...
It's definitely noticeable.
That jumped out.
Well, and it also, as John said, reduces the conflict between pedestrians and the bicycles.
Sure.
We want to point out that this is, there's a long process to approving these, and because there are already a couple of developers interested in that area, we would really like your comments. If there are changes that you would like to see, please let us know, and we'll get those incorporated, hopefully by tomorrow.
Councillor Weaver?
You know, I know we have ordinance, and we write rules that we want the city staff to follow, but part of this seems to me to be, I hope we didn't get too inflexible with this Form-Based coding, because you shouldn't have to bring some of this stuff to us for approval, it seems to me. Staff should have had some discretion to fix those curb cuts where we were obviously having trouble maneuvering.
Well, that's one of the things that this does do, is that we just adhere to the currently adopted city standards, and they're more flexible in terms of curb radiuses and things like that.
And I think they'd been incorporated into the code, had they not?
Yes.
So we did have to bring them to get it changed.
Anybody else?
Very interesting. Thanks for the pictures.
Do you need a motion to refer to Planning Commission?
Please. We have a motion and a second to refer this to Planning Commission? Please vote.
Thank you.
And that was approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us on to ordinances on second reading. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 3337, an ordinance relating to public health and safety, revising the 911 emergency number ordinance, Section 5, emergency telephone service and fee, thereby maintaining the current 5% user fee established and declaring an emergency. We'll need two votes on this.
Okay. Councillors, any questions or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt? Ordinance, okay. Do we do one and then the other? We have a motion to adopt ordinance number 3337. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. On ordinance number 3337, please vote. And that is approved with, that is adopted with a vote of five to zero. And the second, do we have a motion? What would the second motion be?
Motion will be to declare an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to declare an emergency?
Motion to declare an emergency.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on declaring an emergency for CC-1631, please vote. And that is adopted with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to item B on second reading. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 3338, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Stillwater by amending Chapter 2... by amending chapter two, administration, article one, in general by amending section two dash one, tort claims and payment. And just a reminder, this is the ordinance that you approved on first reading that will enlarge the city manager's tort claim settlement authority and will also allow him to settle workers' compensation claims up to the same amount. And we will be providing you some administrative guidelines on the April 18th agenda.
Okay, councilors, any discussion or questions? Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance number 3338?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3338, please vote. And ordinance number 3338 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to reports from officers and boards, Mr. Dorman.
One item tonight ma'am, request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307(c10) to the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development including the transfer of property financing or the creation of a proposal to entice the business to locate within the City of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and would violate the confidentiality of the business.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNichol.
Mayor, thank you. On behalf of the City of Stillwater, we would like to give a sincere thanks to the police officers, school administrators, the teachers, the faculty, the staff, anyone who helped in the Westwood incident last week. Unfortunate incident, the overarching goal in anything that involves a school is the safety of the students and we're just really pleased that in that incident, no one was hurt. Children were safely reunited with their parents, so thank you to all that assisted.
Okay, and that takes us to discussion for miscellaneous items from city council. And before I ask for any news, I would like to thank you, Mr. Weaver. Tonight is your last?
For showing up.
Full meeting, yes, and that too. Tonight is Counselor Weaver's last full meeting in six years. And it's, it's bittersweet to all of us. Thank you for six years of service.
Sweeter for some of us than others.
Yeah, I know, I know. You've served the city and the community in more ways than we can discuss tonight and I just want to thank you for your leadership and for your guidance to those who have been selected after you. You helped us and I know you're giving me the cutoff signal, but actually you can't cut me off right now, I can keep going. And I'm going to say it while I can, because you deserve this. Your distinguished service is something you should be proud of because you represented the citizens of Stillwater in a very honorable way. You put them first and you gave them six years of studying the issues, showing up to so many meetings, showing up to these meetings. And you made tough decisions. You made good decisions. You did your job flawlessly and you did it with the heart of a public servant and it's something that we can all aspire to do the same thing. Stillwater is a better place Joe because of your service and we will miss you, but I know your family is happy that they will get a little more of you on Mondays, maybe they'll kick you back here at some point, but. Counselor and trustee Weaver, you are a good man and we appreciate your service, thank you.
Thanks ma'am, appreciate that.[1333.83][1333.83](applause)
Seems like a big drop, but councilors, any news?
Yeah, it really is a big.
Well, there's an election tomorrow.
Yeah, how do you follow that?
Well, there's an election tomorrow.
That's right.
Okay.
We encourage everyone to get out and vote, so let's get this seat filled.
Yes, so there's the election, what else do we have?
There's election, there's actually three items to vote for on the ballot tomorrow. Obviously, seat, city council seat one, and then two propositions, two proposed amendments to the city charter, number one and number two. So please be sure and get out and vote tomorrow, it's important. If you do need to find out more information about the propositions that are all about the city charter, there is a page on the city website dedicated to the April 5th election ballot and it can give you all the information you need on that. Go vote.
Thank you Counselor Zanotti. Vice Mayor.
I would like to say that the city sponsored the OSU App Center competition which encouraged OSU students to form ideas and develop an app that focuses on improving residents' quality of life. There were two categories and one winner selected from both. I'd like to congratulate Team AN, ON, for its Access Stillwater app, which is an app for residents with disabilities. I also want to congratulate Gobolary Apps who won for its Pause Alert app, which is an app to assist residents looking for lost and found pets. Amazing.
Thank you, it, it really is.
I can't even pronounce it and they can do all that stuff.
It really is amazing and we're, we're thrilled to be able to use those. Counselor Nahara.
Absolutely. With so many meetings regarding the development of Lot 34 and 35, I want to remind residents that they can look at all project updates and actions by going to our website. The city's project page on our website is also a good resource to find out about all of the projects we're currently working on, you can go to stillwater.org. And also today's the first week in April, which means it's glass recycling week, so if you have a glass recycling tote, put it out by the curb on your regular collection days this week. And if you'd like a glass recycling tote and don't have one, you can request one at the city's website, stillwater.org.
Thank you Counselor Nahara.
You're so welcome.
Anything else? Okay, I am going, at this time I'm going to recess this meeting and go to the SUA meeting and then we'll come back to city council meeting for the executive session. Okay, I call the SUA, the Stillwater Utilities Authority, April 4th meeting to order. And trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the SUA consent docket, please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to general orders, Mr. McNichol, contract approval.
For fiber optic, that would be Lauren Smith, provide that report.
Good evening Lauren.
Good evening trustees, Lauren Smith, Generation and Transmission Division Manager. Tonight I'm here to ask for approval to enter into phase two of the fiber optic network installation. On January 4th, 2016, the trustees authorized staff to contract with Trace Technologies for the construction of phase one of the fiber optic network. The fiber optic network is a dual-ring design consisting of a northern loop and a southern loop that intersects in order to provide failover and redundancy should a portion of either loop fail. Currently under construction, phase one is the northern loop. The northern loop has a total length of approximately 14 miles of fiber cable. Phase two will be the southern loop of the network and the southern loop is twice the size of the northern loop with a total length of 28 miles of fiber cable. Trace Technologies was selected as the phase one fiber contractor after, after responses to the original RFP. At our request, Trace Technologies has submitted a proposal for the construction of phase two and is poised to begin construction of the phase immediately after completion of phase one upon trustee approval. Staff evaluated the phase two proposal and it is in line with the original RFP. As a matter of fact, the pricing for the southern loop is approximately 500, or $5,300 less per mile to construct. So we feel like it's a, a very fair, fair proposal, they're under contract and they're doing good work for us now. There is funding available in the rate stabilization fund to pay for this southern loop and it is recommended that the trustees authorize staff to enter into a contract with Trace Technologies for the installation of phase two, the southern fiber optic loop in the amount of $1,150,000 and authorized expenditures from the electric RSF up to 1.265 million, which is a 10% contingency.
Trustees, questions?
It's always nice to hear that it's a little less.
Yes, yes, very good value.
When you said 5,000 something, I thought, oh that's okay, and then you said per mile?
Per mile.
That's very nice.
Yeah, times 28, so.
Yes.
So, very good.
Comments, questions? Is there a motion? Tell us what the motion is again.
It is recommended that the trustees authorize staff to enter into a contract with Trace Technologies for the installation of phase two, the southern fiber optic loop in the amount of 1.15 million dollars and authorized expenditures from the electric RSF for 1.265 million.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to authorize staff to enter into that contract.
Thank you.
Please vote. And trustees approved that with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to officers and boards, general counsel.
Nothing to report ma'am.
City manager.
No addenda.
General manager for this, sorry.
No addenda.
Trustees.
No thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA April 4th meeting, please vote. And the SUA April 4th meeting is adjourned with a vote of five to zero. This time I will reconvene the city council meeting. Counselors, do we have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to move into executive session, please vote. Did you mean to do that Counselor Weaver? Not calling you out, I just, just hadn't.
That's not on yet.
There you go.